Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Mayor Council meeting for the town of Berlin. It's Monday, October 23rd, 2023. Please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you.
The first item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda, which includes a work session minutes from October 10th and the regular session minutes from October 10th. We'll take a moment. I swear to God. Don't think I'm asking. Okay. So, back to our consent agenda, which is Agenda Item 1A, the approval of the work session, regular session minutes of October 10th.
Mayor, just have a couple of things. I'd like to take out the work session minutes, and since there wasn't a quorum there, would suggest that we just approve those by consensus. And then I also have a correction for the regular.
Okay. So, to extract the work session minutes of October 10th from the consent agenda?
Yes, so then, just approve those by consensus. So, does everyone agree that they're okay?
Okay. So, you want to, let's move the work session minutes out. Let's approve the consent agenda, and then we'll revisit the 10-10 work session. All right? So, the work session minutes from October 10th have been pulled. The, we need a motion to approve 1A.
So, moved.
So, I have a motion by Councilmember Nern.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All a vote. Let the record reflect that the Agenda Item 1A with the regular session minutes from October 10th passed unanimously with all council members present, and the work session minutes are out, actually, because of the lack of quorum. And do we have a consensus among members that were present to approve?
Motion.
We'll do it by consent. Any objections? Okay. So, the work session minutes are adopted based on consensus. Up next is Agenda 2A, which is swearing in of newly elected, or newly appointed Board Commissioner or Committee Member. And we have Nikki Lowery here with us. All right. Come forward if you don't mind. And Nikki's on our arts and entertainment.
Wonderful.
Thank you for joining us.
Absolutely.
So, we'll do it right over here. Just be careful with the cord if you don't mind.
Okay.
Come on over here, on this side of the table, so everybody can see it.
Oh, okay.
Raise your right hand if you don't mind, and repeat after me. I.
I, Nikki Lowery.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will be, will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
That I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Serve as a member.
Serve as a member.
Of the Town of Berlin Arts and Entertainment Advisory Board.
Of the Town of Berlin Arts and Entertainment Advisory Board.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the constitutional laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Thank you for serving. All right. So, up next is Agenda Item 2B, which is a citation from Municipal Government Works Month, which is in November, but we always do it the last meeting before October, so we can prepare for November. So, the citation says, "Whereas the town of Berlin was incorporated in 1868, and Maryland is home to 157 municipalities; and whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials; and whereas, in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the town of Berlin is proud to promote municipal government awareness; and whereas municipalities like the town of Berlin have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents, maintaining natural and historic sites and structures, and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play, and explore. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the town of Berlin and Maryland hereby joins the Maryland Municipal League, or MML, in declaring November as Municipal Government Works Month in the town of Berlin." So, thank you to all of our employees and boards, commissions, committee members, and everybody that volunteers to help, whether it's during our cleanup day or just throughout town. So, thank you. Let's give everybody a round of applause just for every. And also, it is Maryland Economic Development Week, right, Sarah? And so, our economic development team is working to push out some information to the public, so keep an eye out for that. That's this month and this week. All right? So, that concludes Agenda Item 2. Agenda Item number 3 is Motion 23A, Motion 2023-48, and that's the West Street roadway reconstruction and utility upgrades design phase. And our town administrator, Mary Ballen, is going to run for it.
Please excuse me, additional livesaver, because otherwise I'll call through the whole thing. Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Josh and Nick with DBF pretty quickly, but this is the design phase only. We had budgeted $100,000. We felt that we weren't going to be able to get too far in this process without having a good idea of what we were talking about. So, DBF has submitted a proposal, which is included in your packet. The motion is at an amount not to exceed $100,000, because when staff met with DBF last week, we realized that as long as we're doing all this work, we might as well come around the corner onto Buckingham, there's only four or five houses, and incorporate that into it. So, we made the motion not to exceed the budget amount to allow them to adjust the proposal just a little bit to incorporate that.
So, thank you for that. Josh, Nick, serve and act it. Nick, I've got your name in memory now.
Of course, we wanted to have this, we put together a proposal here that, as Mary put it, needed to cover soup to nuts, so we tried to put everything in here, but we wanted to bring it before you guys, because it's a lot of work covering multiple disciplines, a lot of area. The project is going to cover roadway work, pedestrian facilities, potentially bike lanes, water, sewer drainage, stormwater management. So, we wanted to bring this proposal before you guys, so you could review it, ask any questions you had, because we pride ourselves in working with the town to try to be good players, think ahead, and make sure we're not regretting something we've done a year or two down the road. So, we certainly welcome any questions or input from you. Mayor, thanks.
The only other thing, this, the design part would exclude undergrounding the electric utilities, right? So, undergrounding the electric utilities there would be the best practice, but the cost of that is, what, several millions of dollars?
Several million of dollars, yes.
So, just so the group's aware, that that does not, that is not included in this design phase.
Correct.
What's Tim's going to do for free?
What would something like that cost, Tim, do you think?
Probably two and a half, three million.
And as Tim pointed out when we met last week, it's not just about the electric. We also have Verizon and Comcast on those poles, and they do not do it for free.
Would it be smart to lay conduit?
Always. A lot of times when we're doing railway projects, Tim will ask us to throw some PVC pipe in the ground. The concrete's already got the road open. It's cheap insurance.
Can we make sure that this doesn't include the conduit at least? And where you would want to see your lampposts?
We're on sewer. We can find out the sewer.
That's right. Water and oxygen mix well, right?
So, I just have a couple of questions. In full, as we talked earlier at the, at the, where were we? At the well?
Water well.
Ribbon cutting. So, you kind of, you had mentioned it earlier, we're thinking ahead a little bit, and I think, obviously, this is something we want to do, and we budgeted for it this year, and that's great, but I think that one of the things we need to plan for and keep in mind is that the stuff that, the areas that feed into West Street that's causing a lot of stormwater issues, such as Abbey and Westminster, the pond there, maybe a little bit of upsher. So, I'm wondering if you can also take the time, I guess, to touch base with EA and include Abbey, Westminster in this. We're at $90,000 now for design. I don't believe that adding that would be too much of a additional cost.
No, we already have some stormwater management design included in this project. We do intend to improve the, not the storm drainage, stormwater management, but I think that looking at Abbey Lane and Westminster, also, as Mary indicated, we add in a portion of Buckingham for water, so if we're down there, let's look at the stormwater management down there. And I was out there last week with Dave and Megan and Nick, and we were looking at the crossing of Battle Creek, and I think we might want to get, think a little outside of the box there to not only make sure that the stormwater is getting off the street, but it's getting treated before going into the streaming there.
There is also some grant funding that we are currently working with to do some design work in that area.
Right. The only thing that I'm concerned about, though, is that design could quickly turn into done, and I wouldn't want us to do, I don't want to dig up anything we've already done. And so, if this happens down the road, and then something, an improvement on Westminster or Abbey with that grant, we have to dig into West Street a little bit again, that's what I'm trying to look, just to.
That's what we're trying to work out.
Yeah, exactly.
So, we'll set up a meeting with EA. Feel free to join us, if anybody wants to call up to a quorum.
Right. Well, we'll put it out, and then.
Let me know when it is, and we'll see if I can be there. But, yeah, so I think that, repeat, for a moment.
The title of this project is West Street Utility and Roadway Improvements. Can you share with us, when all said is done, how this will improve West Street and the life of those folks that live on West Street?
Certainly. So, this started off as a, I think the focus was on the roadway itself, the lack of pedestrian facilities and the lack of bike lanes. So, I think that's where this kind of focus started with, how do we improve this roadway for the people who live here? Not just people who drop it and down it, but the kids who are out there riding bikes. That's something we really need to, you see on the plan you have in front of you, we have a typical existing West Street section, and then just below that, we've added a sidewalk, which would require that we obtain an easement along the southeastern side of the road. And if you guys know West Street, there's some good relief there, hills up, you've got landscaping, you've got trees, but in order to add safe pedestrian facility, that's really the only option we have. Tim's stuck his power poles up and down the other side of the road, and we can't put sidewalk for power poles. Actually, they probably predate you by two decades.
Yes.
So, not only are we going to try to look at improving the safety of the roadway for pedestrians and bicyclists, but we also, we've got old eight-inch cast iron main there. In my experience, an eight-inch cast iron main that's been in the ground for 50, 60 years is probably really a three or four-inch main, and the rest is rust. So, replacing that main would increase the fire flows, increase the pressure, and improve the water quality to everyone on the street and anyone adjacent to the street that it ties into. Additionally, we currently have lead goosenecks, and we believe that the surfaces on that street are original lead goosenecks. As part of the new EPA Band-Aid, we have to melt the inventory of lead goosenecks, but eventually we'll remove them. So, we would remove that health risk as part of this project, along with the old galvanized mains that have been collecting lead over the years. So, on the water side, we've got multiple improvements to people there. On the sewer side, you've got old clay pipe roots to get in, tear that up, and then now you've got a clog, you can't flush it, you're cutting the road open, and, you know, just disrupting the roadway. I noticed when I was out there, I just put a few patches on that road. I can't swear to you whether they're water, sewer, or storm drain, probably a combination of all three, but while we're out there and doing the improvements, it only makes sense to replace that old clay sewer main and put in PVC sewers with precast structures that are going to last you between 15 and 100 years. Storm drainage, you know, there's never enough storm drainage from a flow standpoint, so we're going to look at, look at the storm drains, their sizing, upsize them as much as we can, maybe go to elliptical pipe to increase capacities, but more than just moving the water, we want to look at the quality of that water as it goes into Battle Branch, and then also, like Councilmember Forrest said, taking a look at how we can make improvements at Abbey Lane and Westminster Drive, at the stormwater facilities there, to improve stormwater for this whole area, not just West Street. We also have some ideas about, you know, working with the school to maybe get an easement along their, the county's property there, or some EST storm management places to improve water, the quality of the water, the stormwater. That doesn't really help from a capacity standpoint, but it can help decrease the nutrients and pollutants that are going to the bay. So, we've had a lot of ideas with Jamie and Dave and Jimmy and Megan, and we're certainly willing to welcome any, anything you want us to look at while we're looking at this. Let's take care of it now. Let's look at the future. If you guys have, hear something about development coming in the future, we want to put in a larger service at that point. That's all the kind of stuff we do to try to think ahead, so we don't end up cutting open a new road or having to replace a pipe. So, we certainly welcome as much planning and forethinking as possible.
So, if I could double dip and say something else, I think that everyone would appreciate us taking the time and doing it right, instead of, like, piecemeal.
Jamie won't let me do anything else.
Does anyone else?
I have a couple of questions. In the scope of services, you talked about bike path and sidewalk, and the acquisition easements to allow for the sidewalks, correct? Because the roadway is not wide enough currently to allow for, I believe you just said that sidewalks along which side of the road? Southeast?
Southeast. So, you know, the Buckingham Road side.
Right.
Is where we'd be looking to connect the, the new sidewalk runs from Broad Street to Washington Street on that side, so we'd be looking to continue that all the way to Buckingham Lane or everywhere.
Great, okay.
There's currently sidewalk from Broad Street to, on that side.
Right, okay.
And the handicap ramps are already in, but if you ride down that street, you're going to see there are going to be some obstacles, there are going to be some people who are not happy with us working in their front yard, but I think it is the more economical option because of the power poles being used.
Sure. And the bike path side, same?
It would be on the same side typically as your pedestrian facilities, but that's something we really need to discuss. Typically, if you're adding bike paths, you're adding bike paths going both directions. We do not have the space out here without a significant right-of-way expansion and/or easement and expansion. That would approach even further onto the, into the private property. So, you know, we can make recommendations. We know that there is also a long-term Phase 2 of the town's bike lanes project incorporates bike lanes on railroad, within the railroad right-of-way. So, as much as we want to incorporate or could incorporate a single bike lane into this project, and that would be a four-foot, which is the minimum that you could have for a bike lane, should be four, preferably five feet, six feet if you got it, we have four. We could, if we want to try to incorporate that in this project, we certainly can, with the understanding that we would essentially have one bike lane on a two-way road, so you're going to have bicyclists that need to use some common sense when crossing each other. Certainly improving, but nonetheless, not ideal. The other option is to wait and wait for the railroad right-of-way bike lanes to be implemented, and then people can ride their bikes out there. I was a kid, you ride your bike wherever, wherever your bike will take you.
Yeah, I think that's a really interesting philosophical position for us up here, I think.
And this is the time to really shape where you want to go with that. The rails and trail side, that could be a couple of years down the road, but we're not successful in that grant application. So, with that being said, you have to think of a new school. This is probably going to be a pedestrian, increased pedestrian and bike traffic along West Street, so we're trying to look at something that's going to align with that project.
How, I'm sorry, how wide are would the sidewalks be?
Five foot.
Say that again.
Five foot.
That's a normal.
Yeah. Standard E D.
Yes. So, Josh, going back to stormwater for a minute, with the addition of the imperious services, I think you said it's $13,500 square feet, that's the sidewalk, bike path.
Probably, yes. Well, that's just the sidewalk. Bike path would be inside the existing right-of-way. If we expand, if we expand the right-of-way further, that would be additional imperious and therefore more stormwater.
Correct. So, but you're improving drainage, which will help with the flooding that already exists, but all that's going to flow into the water branch, which is going to have a greater burden on that. Currently, that backs up around 113, and people have said that bike path going under the highway is too small. I don't know if that's the case or not, but that's what I've been told. Anyways, is it possible to coordinate with the state to possibly improve that at the same time that we're doing this, if we are adding flow into the water branch, which flows under 113 and backs up?
Yeah, we, as I was saying, we're going to coordinate closely with the town, with EA, and the next, the next line of department would be the state, and I would rely on EA's expertise on the overall stormwater management flows in Berlin to help us make that case to the state.
Right. Because that's a big piece of the puzzle to make all this work from.
I'm glad you said the overall, not just yet, that's key.
One thing that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The only thing I was going to ask, when you mentioned the possible easement from the county with the school system, would you, if that were to happen, would that be near where the proposed West Street pump station is going to be?
Yeah, it would start at that location and then head to the southwest. And again, that's just a possibility. At this point, we haven't done any survey, we haven't started, we're brainstorming, trying to figure out what all the pieces of the puzzle are, but that's one of, you know, I'm told that's, as far as looking at open areas, you've got the open area on the north side between Broad and Washington, which appears to be less accessible versus the county's property, which the county is usually willing to cooperate with the town, and we really want to get that pump station out of the street. It's just not a safe working environment for the mother's department. It's not smart from a structural standpoint to have a pump station under the roadway, and so hopefully, we can coordinate and work with the county and get not only the pump station moved down the street onto their property, onto that property, but also maybe incorporate some stormwater management there, too.
So, we do need a motion.
I have another question. Are you talking about quality of work and improving that? You also cited some conditions that exist there. You talked about small pipes, you talked about pipes that had rusted and became small. You also talked about the possible presence of lead. Tell me where it, no, that's not the question I want to ask. I take it these, these conditions exist in other places in the town of Berlin?
That's correct. And we have recently been working with the town to put together a lead service line inventory, an inventory of every service line in the town of Berlin. We submitted to the state of Maryland, MDE, for SRF funds to assist us financially with leading that lead service line inventory, which is due to the state on, let's say, October 17th, 2024. So, the town is ahead of the game on that, and we've taken it to the next step in addition. Not only is the town looking to create an inventory of all their lead service lines, but they're already a step ahead of the game in starting replacements on William Street and on West Street with the money that you guys have budgeted to make these improvements.
So, Jamie, does that, the end of the conversation we had on the site, we were talking about the changing of the meters and possibly finding out, will that help with figuring out?
Yeah, so, a part of our meter upgrade, I'm probably jumping into something different. In our contract, we have roughly 1,000, 1,100 that are old, we call them older services. The other 800 to 900 services, we know exactly what they are. DBF has approved the design to build them, so roughly about 1,100 services, we have the inventory, because we have no records of what is in the ground. So, when they do our meter upgrades, they will be test-pitting people's yards, the front side and the back side. People are going to get mad, because we have to test-pick the backside. It's not our call. We're only following the guidelines that we were being told by MDE. That's the same with William Street still wanting to get done, even though you all have it, were hoping to do this, but, not William Street, excuse me, West Street is still wanting to get done, test-pitted on both sides, because we have, it's my license on the line. I mean, hopefully, if you all come to see it, it's a federal propensity. But, I mean, it is, you know, we have to do, it needs to set a goal and a guideline, and it's our job, the town's job, to meet that goal. As we have it proposed right now, we're going to exceed that goal, because we have it in our meter replacement.
So, that's going to basically hit pretty much, well, that's going to hit every property within the municipality of Berlin?
Yes.
So, if you've got the lead blinker or whatever, if you're going to light up because you're lead, then you're going to see that regardless of where you're located.
Yes.
Perfect.
And then also, in the lead replacement program, you have to develop a plan forward. So, I mean, once we get an inventory, probably within two years, if I'm right or wrong with Josh and Nick, MDE is going to say, well, you know this is, so now how do you plan to move forward? So, we'll have to develop a plan to move forward also.
Yeah, once that inventory is developed, you know, again, you guys already have a leg up because of the projects you have in the pipe, but once you have that plan, you said, hey, we have a problem. You've presented it to MDE, you've presented it to EPA, and they're going to say, all right, well, how are you going to fix it? So, then we'll prioritize how the mains will be, how the lead service lines will be replaced, and we will be going back to the state and federal government, asking how they're going to help us to fund these projects, and because we'll be ahead of the curve with regards to most of the municipalities in Maryland, I think we'll be in a good position to receive maximum grant funds that the town of Berlin can.
That's great. Thank you for that. Take a motion.
Well, I just, this is, I mean, this is really, really cool. I think the two things for me are, I'd like to hear more from your meeting with EA, and I'm still kind of, I'm not sure about the sidewalk, bike path route yet, but I think since this is design phase, we have time to kind of think that one through. I would make a motion, though, that we table to 2023-48 until next meeting in November to hear the outcome of your meeting with EA Engineering for the stormwater.
Well, to, they are not yet being paid to do this work until we approve the proposal. So, at this point, if we were to ask them to meet with EA, it is either an assumption that we're moving forward with a proposal, or it comes out of their own call services. Just to be clear, that a meeting with EA would be part of this overall project.
And not to speak out of term, but I would be fine.
I understand that, yeah.
And also, if they win in two weeks, would it allow us to modify? And we will be going back to the state and federal government asking how they're going to help us to fund these projects. And because we'll be ahead of the curve with regards to most of the municipalities in Maryland, I think we'll be in a good position to receive maximum grant funds that the town of Berlin can receive.
That's great.
Thank you for taking the motion.
Well, I just, this is, I mean, this is really, really cool. I think the two things for me are, I'd like to hear more from your meeting with EA. And I'm still kind of, I'm not sure about the sidewalk bike path route yet, but I think since this is design phase, we have time to kind of think that one through. I would make a motion, though, that we table to 2023-48 until next meeting in November to hear the outcome of your meeting with EA Engineering for the stormwater.
Well, two, they are not yet being paid to do this work until we approve the proposal. So at this point, if we were to ask them to meet with EA, it is either an assumption that we're moving forward with a proposal or it comes out of their own call services. Just to be clear, that a meeting with EA would be part of this overall project.
And not to speak out of turn, but I would be fine.
I understand that, yeah.
And also, dealing with two weeks would allow us to modify as necessary the wording to make sure we're covering the work on Buckingham Lane, covering the coordination effort with EA at Abbey Lane and Westminster, and making sure that we also, right now, we exclude downstream storm drain analysis. So I can change that wording to say we will, to a degree, coordinate with EA as the town of Berlin's storm engineer and M D, or Maryland S A J with regards to the work. And I think we can still stay below the threshold that was set and modify the wording, make all that clear, and then come back in two weeks. And I expect more questions.
Hi, hi, speaking as Jack is the district two, I would appreciate that, so I still have a motion.
Okay, so I'll second your motion.
So I have a motion to table motion 2023-48 until our next meeting, and a second by Councilmember Nairn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. So let the record show that motion 2023-48 passes four to one with Councilmember Green in opposition. Thank you both, we appreciate it, and we'll see you again in two weeks.
Thank you.
All right, motion 2023-49, community center parcel transfer. It has Mayor Zach Timber running point, but I also have, I have Vice President, well, Co-Vice President of the Berlin Community Center Committee, Ms. Anne Hudson here, as well as Gabe Purnell, who's a member of the committee, and Commissioner Diana Purnell, who's been joining us for all of this. Do you want to come forward with us? It's up to you. Okay, all right. So I'll try to summarize, if I get something incorrect, please let me know. And we'll also have our town attorney and town administrator here to help us along the way. And I want to acknowledge Vice President Burrell and Councilmember Nichols, who are both on the committee as well. So what we're doing here, if the group remembers, we had an M O U where we entered into an agreement with the V C I A and Shore Up to be able to say, hey, look, we're going to work together and consolidate these parcels for the purposes of a community center. If it's not used for a community center, then those parcels of property would go back to the V C I A. You'll see here on the screen, the square area is the parcel that the town of Berlin owns. If you look behind the Head Start parcel and the multipurpose building parcel is a parcel that Worcester County Government owned and has transferred, included the transfer to the town of Berlin. I do want to thank Councilmember, or Commissioner Purnell for her work on that. You were instrumental in getting that transferred, so thank you so much. With that being said, we are now at the part where we would like to take both of these parcels, the Head Start parcel and the multipurpose building parcel, and consolidate those all into one. With that being said, there is an agreement in our packet this evening. It is not signed by the V C I A yet, but that's just because DJ is out of town. And there's a, Gaskell, you want to identify the Head Start parcel and the other portion that we have here in front of us this evening?
The parcels eight forty-one and eight forty-three, that are depicted on the tax map that's in the packet.
And then do you want to talk about, we have a supplemental document that you sent over as far as the lease agreement? Because there is the caveat in this agreement. Go ahead.
The lease agreement's pretty simple.
Straightforward.
It was entered into in 2008, and it's a 20-year lease agreement between the V C I A and Head Start. It's set to expire on April 30th of 2028.
And just so that everybody is aware, the town of Berlin is not in any way trying to cancel the agreement with the transfer with Shore Up or the partnership with the V C I A. We are just trying to consolidate the parcel so we can move a community center project forward. Shore Up would still be an entity using the site and still be a core partner in the future community center.
That's correct.
Did I miss anything? Or did I summarize it okay? All right, thank you. Councilmember Burrell or Nichols, have I missed anything?
No, but when you're identifying the parcel, now that you see the parcel's here, when you're identifying the parcel that was transferred from the county to the town, was that eight ten?
Uh, no, you're looking back here, eight thirty-four.
So, yeah, and that's why, I mean, I was, just wanted to be clear so that when someone is looking at it, they see what the projected or the proposed size.
The county commissioners, the county commissioners sent it over a deed to their property, granting it to the town of Berlin. I gave that to Dave Engelhardt.
To record.
To record, and I don't know whether he's done that or not yet. But it is the town's property.
And I think the entire site, by the time you include the back parcel from the county, the parcels from the V C I A and the parcel that the town purchased is a little more than seven acres, I think.
That's enough, that's going to make a beautiful community center site.
I have a survey plan, would you like to look at this? It's a little clearer than that tax map. Do you want to see it?
Do keep in mind, though, that parcel eight fifty-four contains a significant storm load. So it's, it's not buildable.
And that's, just having that clear, just looking at it, at least.
Thank you, David.
So David, I have a question.
I think Councilmember Nairn has a question first.
Yeah, I had two questions. One pertains to item number five, where it says, any and all rents received. What are the rents?
According to the agreement that Gaskell sent us, it looks like Shore Up is renting the space from the V C I A at no cost.
Okay.
And that they are covering the utilities, is that correct, David? So I think it's just in there as if there is a threat.
The other question I had pertains to item number seven, where it says that this will be a community center in perpetuity, which is fantastic. And in the event that use ceases to exist, that the property shall revert back to the V C I A. And that may never happen, but what in the event that V C I A ceases to exist 20 years from now, fifteen years from now? What happens?
Well, then we'll have, well, hopefully it'll be a community center, we don't need a reverse.
I understand that, I understand, what if?
Well, my thought is.
If there's not an entity for it to revert to.
Then it remains with the town.
It should, but.
But I think the other crucial part is that we want, and the group even in our meetings, has been trying to work with the V C I A to ensure that the 501(c)(3) is in good standing and that it's a crucial partner.
And it happens throughout the process.
And, and a, I mean, it's important that all parties are at the table together. There are certain things that Shore Up can do, there are certain things that the V C I A can do that the town can't, and certain funding sources and programming that they're more suited to be able to offer than what we are. So it's in our interest, as well as the V C I A's interest, to remain vibrant, and I think everybody wants that. Is that?
Yeah, I think so, but my thought would be with any entity, if, if the thought ever came, and, you know, God forbid that ever happened, if the thought ever came that the entity was looking to dissolve itself, that they would make us aware, all parties involved aware long before that came to be so that we could all work together to figure out what the next steps would be.
All right, so we do need a motion to the, oh, go ahead, sorry, Councilmember.
That's okay. It's about number seven, too, and I guess it's a little formal. Jay talked to Councilmember Nairn, said it's in perpetuity and in the event that the use ceases to exist, what does that, what does that mean if we tear it down?
If it's no longer a community center for the town citizens.
Okay, that's, that was just my question.
Like if we said we're going to move the community center somewhere else?
Okay.
And property would go back to the V C I A. Which led into my question.
Well, that's basically for both parties, that's covering both entities. For V C I A, if that were to happen, if the community center didn't exist any longer, no one would ever feel that we, the town, still held what's theirs. That wouldn't be, you know what I mean? That wouldn't be ethical. So if it didn't happen, then they would get what they brought to the table back.
Correct. It's a partnership, it really is, all the way. We do need a. A motion by Vice President Burrell and a second by Councilmember Nichols to approve motion 2023-49, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that motion 2023-49 passed unanimously. Thank you, Gabe, Commissioner Purnell, and Anne, for everything you've done and for continuing to meet with us. What's that round of applause? Oh, come on, one more.
Hold on, you center.
And thank you, Commissioner Purnell, for everything you've done. We can't thank you enough for helping us transfer that back parcel. It really is going to mean a lot. So now.
Okay, now we can applaud.
Thank you. All right, so up next is agenda item three C. Did we win? Are we okay? Since I was just not in.
Yeah, I need to say, is Ryan here?
Ryan is, yes, okay. So motion 2023-50, 2024 Town Events, Rain Dates, Economic Community Development Director Ivy Wells and Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Sienna Allen. Come on forward. And then just go ahead and provide a summary to the group of the board. Square away.
All right. How you doing, guys?
Doing well, thank you.
All right, so instead of asking for rain dates for all of the events that we took, which are, that would be entirely too much, and also in view of what we didn't quite get this year. We had jazz and blues, we had a rain date for that, thank you. Fortunately, we didn't need it. We did lose out on Fiddler's Convention, and we did lose out on the bulk of Oktoberfest. So what a lot of the businesses in town get from these, if you just sort of back in the napkin math, say we have 2,000 people to come into town, and on average, they're going to spend about $50 a head. That's $100,000, it's sprinkled through downtown. A chunk of it goes to the chamber, the majority of that is going to go to businesses, restaurants, everything. You have a whole bunch of businesses out here that lost out on a chunk of change over two weekends, and they're not very, anyone about that, unfortunately. What we're hoping to do, and following the template that Ms. Walt suggested, we would like to ask for sort of compressed rain dates for three of the events, the three big ones. The Jazz and Blues, Fiddler's Convention, and Oktoberfest. Instead of trying to reserve a separate weekend at some other point in the calendar, it was suggested that we shift our events from being on Saturday to being on Sunday in the hopes that 24 hours really makes a big difference. So for our Jazz and Blues, which is going to be in, let's see, it'll be Saturday, May 4th next year, we're hoping to shift that over to the fifth, Sunday, May 5th. Fiddler's, which would be the weekend of September 20th through 22nd, we would compress that to only Sunday, September 22nd, and move October from the 12th to the 13th similarly. That's really the bulk of it. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Any questions for Ryan?
So just as a note, the motion, the dates need to be 24. But anyway, when, I know it's difficult with weather and trying, especially like in October, September-ish, man, it's difficult. So when do you think you would be in a position to notify of the date changed to folks? So would you like the Wednesday before, the Thursday before? Just trying to get an idea of what you're announcing. As far as when you would call it or announce the change, what we've done this year when we're calling our dates is we try to do that 48, 72 hours ahead. For Fiddler's, we have to consider also bands flying in from Nashville and wherever else they were. So we're trying to be able to call these events on Wednesday or Thursday, depending on conditions.
Okay. Which is also, I'm AI, consistent with the Department of Emergency Services and other weather briefings on Thursdays, so it's consistent with our checking.
So Fiddler's, all of these events have road closures, correct? Jazz and Blues is closed or not?
Yes.
I guess, I mean, I don't have a problem with the rain dates. I guess just the fact that it's a Sunday and any folks who go to religious services, if there's any concerns about that.
But if you think about it, I'm sorry, I'm going to cut you off.
I think the timing is okay.
I mean, but if you think about it, this pretty much lines up almost to the farmer's market. So, you know, we usually have that farmer's market, the streets closed for that already on Sundays, you know what I mean? It's not that it would be, and I'm not disputing what you're saying.
Yeah.
But the streets are closed every Sunday for farmer's market for several months.
So have you talked to Ivy then? Well, I guess. These dates were initially her suggestion, and then also suggested by my former president, and that is what our board of directors elected to pursue.
Okay.
I think Sarah. To add in that, so I was not well, but she told me to make sure that you all know that we already, she already planned about on the May and September dates to move the farmer's market to the post office parking lot.
Thank you.
And that might even work for them as well. I mean, if everybody's here fiddling it up, they might want to go around the corner and.
I can imagine that the farmer's market matters are going to do poorly on a weekend like that, so.
Any additional questions, Rob?
Yeah, I mean, I look at this as a, a rainer, quite frankly. I like the idea of moving from a Saturday to a Sunday instead of Saturday to the following Saturday.
It makes it a lot more difficult.
Raised some great points last, two weeks ago, as far as wetting, something I hadn't considered. You know, we spent quite a bit of time talking about not providing competition to our downtown businesses. We talked about the redevelopment of the park. If we don't provide this, well, we saw what happened with Fiddler's Convention. We saw what happened with Oktoberfest. Oktoberfest was an outstanding pivot, I thought. But there's no question that it was not the event that it would have been. Some businesses did great, luckily enough to have a stage, you know, they did wonderful. But, you know, to me, we take, talk about this decision, staffing, while I know it's not ideal to have both these every weekend kind of in the middle, you will know by the middle of the week, Wednesday or Thursday, which day the event will be held. And, you know, I just feel like this is an economic development. We talked a lot about this summer, and we talked about hearing park redevelopment, about the vulnerabilities of our businesses. Allowing this option will strengthen our businesses, gives them, they don't lose a whole economic weekend by having a storm. You know, so to me, it's a no rainer. I'll see if there's any other questions before making a motion to support.
To, to your point about resilience, one of the comments that a business owner downtown made after Fiddler's had been canceled, said that was, that was going to be me catching up on my rent.
Yeah, the question, right.
I do believe that, that a rain date for these three events is, is a considering thing to do. And if Steve does the moment, I would like to move that this request be approved.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion for motion 23-50 by Vice President Burrell and a second by Councilmember Green. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the rain dates for Jazz and Blues, Fiddler's Convention, and Oktoberfest passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Yeah, there we have it. All right, up next is agenda item three D, motion 2023-51, Water Resources Department, apprenticeship program, our Water Resources Director, Jamie Lachance, come on forward.
Yes, Mineral Waters asked us if we would join the National Apprentice, pretty much the same thing that Tim did. It's in my staff report, and I was, I was actually talking to the lady now, and she said that she would do everything she could do to help us offset funding for training and classes and all that, too, which is the same thing Tim and I talked about the other day. So I think it's a smart move in the field that's a dying field. So hopefully you all would approve it so we can move forward and try to help out.
And also, before we do, I served on the Stephen Decatur's High School's Business Path, and they were talking about how each one of the students has to fulfill an obligation. Part of that, depending on their pathway, may be an apprenticeship program. So this is right in line with what could help some of our local high school students be able to progress in a path. So it's very smart. Thank you, David.
If there's any questions, I'll make a motion.
If there's any questions, I'll make a motion to approve motion 2023-51.
Motion by Councilmember Orson, a second by Councilmember Nichols, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect the motion 2023-51 passing unanimously. Thank you, Jamie.
No problem, I give.
Up next is Agenda Item Number 4A, Skate Park Site Location. It has Mayor Zach Tindall, Wehart Berlin, Director, I forget what your title is, both of you come up. I got Tony Lee and Dev Smith, I lose track of who's what.
That's the public guy.
Director.
President.
What is it again?
Director.
Director.
President. All right, okay, very good, thank you. Thank you both. So I'm going to try like what I did with the community center thing, and then you all just fill in gaps. In addition to the Wehart Berlin folks and town staff, Councilmember Green and Councilmember Nichols are both on the subcommittee we created to be able to explore and fulfill an obligation or a location for a skate park. The council will probably recall a motion that we passed a couple of weeks ago, maybe a couple of meetings ago, that included naming Harren Park as the site of a future skate park. The subcommittee met our first time and determined that Harren Park's the best location. In consultation with the Parks Commission, I see some of the members here with us this evening, we determined that parcel 410 here towards the back where you have the berm before you hit the lagoons was the best location for a skate park. We met again, yep, we met again in the subcommittee, and we said, okay, since in front of where you see the skate park depicted on this flat, we want to also put a public works facility. How do we maximize 410 the most for potential resale as well as 57 if the council decides to go that route, or whatever future use may occur? We said, excuse me, maybe we need to move the skate park over to the back end of 57, and there appeared to be consensus on that with the group at our last meeting, and then subsequently, we've had some discussion that's got us back to 410. So we're really still at Harren Park, we were just trying to work through some logistics, and I think there's consensus now among the group to want to see it where it's depicted here somewhat. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think that if we were to look at this place as it is today with these current plans, a skate park put in that location would be the best fit. I think that a nailed-down, solid skate park location should come on the heels of a grand plan, and whether that grand plan is done on a piece of paper or 85 pages of paper over a month or over six months. We should have some sort of a light plan for what will be around it, but I think, looking at the geography, looking at what the town wants to do with the public works facility on that side of 410, and potentially selling this 57 parcel, if we were to encumber the 57 parcel with any sort of skate park, it would be potentially encumbering dollars that we could realize for that space, where I think if we were to keep it on the 410 spot right there, we sort of, we don't know that we're going to keep that space, but if we're putting a public works facility on that spot, chances are we're going to keep that space. So lightly penciling it there, I think, makes the most sense for the town, and then we can go to a concrete after and on the heels of a plan, whatever that plan looks like.
Well, I want to position you all in a spot where you can start really moving forward with the design work and the fundraising side as far as hitting some of our partners. So we'd like to nail down the location as much as possible. But Councilmember Green, Councilmember Nichols, what are your thoughts on this? Just from the committee side.
Oh, things. With keeping in, just keeping in with what we're already planning with public works and that green in spot, it's, it does feel that this, I mean, the idea, the thought, because we are talking about what we're going to do with the rest of this. We don't know what 57's future is, sounds like possible resale or what have you, but encumbering any parts of that, you're right, it does kind of touch whatever dollars may be coming. I kind of like the idea of having it there because of what's sitting in that spot currently. This may help keep some of the negativity, for lack of a better term, away from the existing building, but it's not going to be there permanently. Building, hopefully, won't be there, and it's a freaking state forever, so putting you there may not be the smartest move. So keeping you, I mean, it's just like second guessing ourselves, so keeping you in the first class, how about it?
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, I think the important thing for me is that for us, the town to remain fluid to a degree, but allow you all to move forward with the grant opportunities and those sorts of things. So, you know, when we had our subcommittee meeting, I think we left with a new direction. We have great subcommittee meetings, it's really awesome, the energy is really good, it's all, we all want the same thing, which is great. So that's, to me, is most important, is that the town remain fluid enough with the site for Wehart Berlin to allow you all to move forward with your consultant work and grant funding. So I think.
I think our existing motion probably does that. I think, I mean, our existing motion wouldn't, the one that we passed at our last meeting.
You're really not making any changes.
Right, that's why we put it as a discussion item. We want you all to be able to move forward as much as possible, but we don't think you 410.
Ultimately, it really is a huge opportunity for Berlin to be here, because we're coming in with the ability on our own to raise the money to do this, and to use this as an opportunity to start that plan for what the whole park is going to look like. So I would hope that this is a great opportunity, if we're going to decide on putting it there, that this is a great chance for the town to actually say, okay, let's use this thing that we're going to build, use this as a chance to start the plan for what the whole thing is going to look like, so that when we actually come in and start putting concrete down to put in the skate park, we already know what's going to happen around.
Row is going to go here, sidewalk's going to go here, public works is going to go here, like, all of that should be sort of figured out.
Yeah, so that's it right there. So that's the segue is, what are we going to do? The whole thing, really. I know, we need, I think we all needed to take a pause for a couple of months, but, you know.
I think Chris always said something about like, what did you say, like a bath in the wilderness or something, you always talk about.
A what?
A little wilderness bath.
I haven't quite got it right.
What is it? Explain it, what is it?
It's on TV.
Did you, are you ready for this?
Yes.
This is your time in the sun, go ahead.
Well, I'm going to come up here with Tony and.
Oh goodness.
Well, because I mean to see you.
Okay, you got to see the reactive.
Yeah, well, I do have to see you. Hi, I'm Tricia Duffin, I've lived near this town for a while, and not more near, I admit it, but I'm on the Parks Commission, I have a deep, abiding love of nature, and I know that, I know that those are just retention ponds, I know that it's just a made-up thing that we have there, but it's there now. I know that there is a lot of wildlife that enjoys it, I know that there are a lot of bird watchers and nature lovers who come to Worcester County. As a matter of fact, isn't that like the hook line for Worcester County, you know, nature, some nature? Who can tell me what the hook, the line for, it's Nature's Beauty or something lovely like that? Yeah, pardon?
Maryland's Coast, though.
Yeah, but there's some about nature in there, too, because they show everybody enjoying it, you know, like kayaks, and, you know, I've got too many people with binoculars, but they don't photograph well, so. So all of this being said, it gives us a chance, we had, when we bought this property, my Lord, the ideas that were put down on that paper, I mean, were you there that, when we were over in the community center, the community building, we sat there listening, idea after idea after idea of what we, Berlin, could do with all of our inspired people. I had, I saw Deb Riley put a great idea up on there about converting it into an art space, you know, let's think about that kind of use. When we're going to have a skate park, what about having a soda thing for kids to go to after that? Why don't we take charge of these? Yes, it's not, it's not easy, but with drive and a lot of fundraising, we could come up with anything we want, the thing is, we have to decide. I would love to see that, well, on the side.
But Tricia, I really wanted your help with explaining to them what you keep talking me about, the wilderness bath.
That's exactly what I'm moving to right this second. But I have to get the background, and I have to bring you on a walk, but this is a walk about what can, is a possibility. We have the railroad track there, down on the side down there where it's, it's pretty much a lot of, the jeeps put some ditches in there, and there's a whole, used to be a decent pathway, I know that kids used to ride their bikes, and you could go up past, underneath where the, it's mowed out for the power lines, but then go back up around the back. Now you can make a walkway with beautiful forest, native plants, there's a whole blueberry patch right now that's covered in poison ivy, but we can get rid of the poison ivy. We can remove the things we don't like and emphasize the things that we do. A forest bath is going, taking a walk in a quiet, beautiful, beautifully designed place where you can go relax, and it's an event you go on, you notice the plants that are there, you see some birds, this is a forest bath.
Thank you. I think to Steve's point, we need to have a work session with forest baths.
I think we should take a forest bath before we go, go on, but it's widely liked in Japan. I will leave this to another.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Can I, am I okay? Because I've been sitting on this for a while, and I'm trying to get, trying to be calm, but I am passionate. So I think that we, the skate park on 410, I mean, I think we should show a little respect on what we've already decided, so that's where I am on that. But I think that we need to discuss what we're doing with it, like Steve said. Right now, we don't have, I think it's on its way, but we don't have an RFP on the demo. We don't have a plan, as far as I know, on what we're doing after that. Are we demoing to resell? Are we demoing to keep? Apparently, I mean, apparently we are going with public works here, which is great, at the last I heard, it was just an idea, and I think it's something to explore. But, I mean, are we, are we, I guess first off, do we want to keep the whole thing? Or are we looking to sell the whole thing? Are we looking to sell just 57, like I mentioned earlier? I don't think that we've had these, we haven't had these discussions, and honestly, I'm not sure that those discussions should entirely be on this body. I would throw onto the group, and I'm sorry to the skate park, you folks are here for this, but.
This is why we want to get away back.
Yeah, yeah, the back, yeah. You know, the Parks Commission, I believe, has, we know, has great knowledge, and they take great care and ideas of our parks. If we are keeping the whole thing, I would suggest that the disposition and direction of parcel 52, which is the ponds, that just go to the Parks Commission, let them decide what to do with it, and then come to us like they do with anything, any other park in the community. The front part is where I believe the community is wanting something to happen. I don't want to rehash the whole selling of 57, but we need to decide where we're going. And like I said, I'm okay with skate park on 410, but that's, that's where we decided, that's where we resolved it to be. Now, I think, would be the time to possibly have the Planning Commission develop their own subcommittee to talk about the rest of the property. First and foremost, the demo, yes, but we're not land developers, we're not real, well, we're not into real estate. Not all of us. Things change, yes, things do change. But, but my point is that I believe that we need to, to take that pause, as Steve suggested, and I completely agree, and throw, if we just, if we're keeping the whole thing, 52, the ponds, give that to the Parks Commission, you're welcome. And then let the Planning Commission decide, or help us to decide what to do with the I will see myself out.
Can we take it in stride? Is everybody good with the skate park?
This guy.
With the motion that we passed previously? Can we say thank you to Wehart Berlin and GoFundraise?
Yes.
Thank you. We appreciate everything. I just don't think we ever clap so much in meetings. If there's a new committee formed to decide what's going to happen here, we'd love to have a seat. I think we got to figure out what's going on with our demo grant first. Either way. In full transparency, we agree, but Secretary's Office has reached out for some questions following our most recent discussions, so let's see where that takes us.
Well, that should be, I think, number one, the demo.
There's a new one, we'd love to have a seat. We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next is Agenda Item 4B, Town of Berlin Parks EDU Review, Town Administrator Mary Ball is going to run for it.
I think the easiest thing on this would be to ask the questions, yeah.
This was brought before the group as a discussion item following several email correspondence between the body and, well, really.
Various staff.
Yeah, staff level questions, so it's, it's here, if anybody would like to ask questions or discuss.
Well, I think, I mean, if I could just jump in, because it kind of, I mean, it did strike me, the questions that I posed came from some residents after the, after the parcel 57 discussion about EDUs and a potential sale. So it's, I mean, it's all, but the over, the goal that I was trying to accomplish was that EDUs, for lack of a better term, are this, in some areas, this mysterious thing that is just three letters to generally folks. So I wanted to, was hoping to clarify it a little bit onto what it is, how much is it, what is the town paying on parks, and that's all the answer here. I think it is important to note that, and maybe Mary, you should explain this better, that after some investigation, it's not really ready to surfe, it's a minimum amount.
That's correct.
So it's just a different verbiage, but the money's the same.
The correct term is a minimum bill, however, in this particular case, it was set at the rate of a ready-to-surfee.
So I mean, I do, and then obviously, if we wanted to change it, it would double, and I'm not sure, I mean, we could talk about that, but I don't think you need to do that necessarily. And the other, not to commandeer the conversation, but the other question was, discussion came up on, with Coaster Ventures, on how many to move, if any, and I see that the staff recommendation is to leave EDUs on 57 and pay the minimum bill, that they're correct.
We do indicate in here that we do feel that it would be prudent to move a couple of those EDUs to the other parcels as a forethought. It would make sense, at this, you know, as long as the town owns those parcels, you can transfer them. Once you start selling them, then they go with the parcel that is sold. So it would be prudent, particularly looking at parcel 410, if you're planning to put a skate park in a public works facility, and you're going to need an EDU or more, or two or three maybe, I'm not sure, associated to that, sorry, assigned to that parcel. So it would be prudent to move some of those that are currently on 57 over to one or both of those other parcels.
And I think the other question, and full disclosure, when I ask these questions, emailing to staff, some, most of the time, they're from residents, I mean, it's not just me trying to be y'all or work, but so moving part, moving EDUs from 57 to 410, for example, if we move two, does that affect evaluation assessed to the property in any way?
Well, I would say that it would, if the value of the park property includes consideration of how many EDUs are on it, then I would say that, yes, it would impact the value. I can't speak to that, as you said a moment ago, I'm not a, not a real estate person, but I, it common sense tells me that it would.
Well, and you said a moment ago, EDU is just three letters to a lot of people, but to the Town of Berlin, in our code, it specifies what an EDU is, you know, that's what I'm just saying, that it also comes with a dollar amount. $17,000 for a water and sewer EDU.
It's $16,686, to be exact, not to change something, but I'm just saying, I don't want to, I'm not trying to be rude, but understand, if we transfer them, we still have to buy the water. You're only transferring sewer EDUs only.
Yes.
So a water EDU is $4,200 and some dollars, somewhere around there, so $4,200, give or take. So that, that's all I wanted to say, I mean.
So the value is roughly a $12,000 transfer with each?
Yes.
And then that. And, and then that minimum bill would, we would have to create an account on the new parcel with the new EDU or the transferred EDUs and pay a bill on that. So it's not going to save you anything as far as that goes.
And Public Works is not a done deal. It's just in the planning phase. And the other thing is, is that it would probably span 191 and 410. So it would be a new 191, more likely, wouldn't you think, Gasco? So just so that, not to complicate it further.
No, no, the reason I wanted to have this discussion was so that we could talk about this and then everybody who's listening in virtual land or watches it later has a better idea of what the mysterious EDU is.
If there's an interest to transfer, what we can do, and what I think the cleanest way to do that would be, is if somebody wants to indicate what that transfer would look like, we'll kind of get some consensus about that and put it on as a future motion.
What, you're playing this way? I, I would agree with that, but I do think that this also ties into what we talked about with the skate park and what are we going to do. So I think that step, this is just me, would be perhaps not at this particular juncture. But that's just me.
But you got to think about, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you up. You got to think about at least, at least one, maybe two, with this skate park underway. Because you're going to want to have some kind of facility on that site. You know what I'm saying?
And then more for Public Works.
So you've got to think about, I mean, I don't want to take away a lot.
Well, yeah.
No, I wouldn't think it would be that many, because Public Works as a facility itself is not going to be a huge water and sewer use of. It may be more than one, because they'll be, they'll have bays to wash vehicles and that kind of thing. But it probably won't be more than two or three at most. But as long as we own the properties, you don't really need to do anything.
Right.
It's there. It's not going anywhere. So you have, it's not a decision that has to be made.
The only thing we've done before, the only thing we've done before.
Yes.
And I, it's a formality, and I think we should still follow, because we made other people, is Mary put the request in and go in front of you all to ask for the transfer. Because we make, the residents do it.
Oh, absolutely.
Most definitely.
But I think this body, rather than us putting something at staff level forward for your consideration, you need to let us know about what you want before we put something on the agenda.
No, I don't think, I don't think we're there by any means.
But at least put the thought in the back of your head. Hmm, this is possibly what's going there. Think about how many of these things we might need. That's like.
All right. So I have a couple of questions. So let's talk about the money flow. So we bill ourselves for this minimum bill every month. Where does the money come from? On what account? What account does it go to?
It's all based on the fund. If it's a sewer case, comes from the sewer. If it's water, comes from the water. Just like we pay for the streetlights, we pay it out of the general fund.
Pay it out of the general fund and it flows into the sewer fund or water fund?
It's a, it's a sewer bill, like any resident.
So it's just basically a transfer of money from one end to the other?
Yeah.
No, sir. The sewer pays the electricity and the sewer pays the sewer bill from the sewer fund. That doesn't come from the general fund.
In this case, what fund is paying that bill?
From a park.
From a park.
Sewer fund.
But, hold on. If a park has an EDU, a park is held by the general fund, would pay the enterprise fund for that service, right?
The sewer bill gets paid out of the sewer fund because it's a sewer service.
No, I don't, I don't think, if.
Take.
When we pay, when we pay the electric bill for town hall, it comes out of the general fund.
Towards the, towards the expense.
No, I understand the revenues go to the sewer fund. But I'm saying when we cut the check, for, for instance, for town hall electric, it comes out of the general fund to the electric fund. So for the sewer, for the Heron Park EDUs, should come from the general fund into the, to the utility fund?
They, yes, the expenses are coming.
So basically, like I said, it's a transfer from one end to, to the other.
Correct.
That's like a transfer, but a payment.
Right, yeah, yeah. The month, the town still keeps the money.
Yes, in that sense, yes. It's accountability.
So in this write-up you did, Mary, you mentioned one thing, page 39, down towards the bottom, section two, you said, in the option of reverting all EDUs back to inventory, in that case, all money paid to date would be forfeit. What does that mean?
Well, I'll use the example of, of an average residential property. If they are paying the minimum bill and they stop paying it, and we attempt collection on it and they simply do not pay it. At some point, we will say, you have not paid the bill. We are taking back your EDU. So any money that they had paid to date are gone. We now have the EDU back in our inventory and that property owner has, has lost anything that they paid toward.
Yeah, because they're not paying toward the EDU.
They're paying to hold the EDU.
Right, they're preserving the rights of the EDU.
Which is the reservation fee.
Now, if they were financing the EDU, which we have a pathway for that too.
That's different.
Right, that's different.
Purchase of the EDU is different than paying the minimum bill on the reserved EDU.
So since the recent valuation we had on parcel 57 will not factor in the value of the EDUs, thirty-six EDUs, you made the recommendation here, I believe, is what you're saying. You're saying it would be better to keep those in play rather than revert them back to inventory.
Yes, yes.
Continue to pay the bill. Why would we do that?
Well, because you've been paying on them to this point. If you, as long as you continue to pay on them, then they are valued at whatever they were valued at. And again, I'm looking at the town as any other property owner. So as long as you continue to pay on them, they are valued at what? The old rate when you started paying. So if you were to revert them, and it maybe goes up to twenty thousand dollars in five years, you would have to pay that higher, like, say, in the bottom years. Correct.
And I know that we keep saying, I don't want to head down the path, but I know we keep saying that the EDUs, even though they're sewer EDUs, weren't valued in the appraisal, which is true.
She said.
She did say it, but I don't know if I believe that response, because you can't take something and say that asset doesn't have that value there.
Yes, yeah, actually, I heard, right.
Yeah, I think there was some confusion.
There were two assumptions that were made. One, that the site would be cleared, which is false at 1.2 million. So we knew we weren't going to, if you take the appraisal, then 1.2 million, it's like it's not cleared. The appraisal says 1.2 million, a clean slate. And also the ability to develop the property. We take the EDUs out, there's no ability to develop the property. That was my whole beef.
I think it needs further unpacking with the appraisal.
I, I don't think that, and I'm just, this is my opinion on what she said that night. She was not looking at the EDU specifically in establishing that valuation, but I think that from a potential buyer's perspective, if they knew that there were no EDUs associated, it would certainly change the value for them.
Way down.
Yeah.
That would be for any developer.
Sure, yeah.
Partially, they want to develop.
Yes, with no EDU. Right, correct, hey, correct.
Any more discussion on 4B? All right, let's move on to Agenda Item number five. We have the Berlin Fire Company and Berlin Fire Company EMS here with us this evening. President Dave Fitzgerald and Chief RJ Rook. If you don't mind coming forward, I think we're starting with the Fire Company 4D review.
Thank you, Book.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we can jump right in. Quarter of July 1st to September 30th. In town, we had 30 calls. Out of town, we had 79 calls. That's a decrease of nine calls from the last year's, this time frame. Our busiest days were Sundays and Fridays. And then our busiest times of the day for this quarter were 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And second busiest was 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Eighteen different times throughout the course of the quarter, we had at least two or more emergencies going on at the same time. Last year, it was 15 times during the quarter, so that's up a little bit. And for this quarter, our average response time is four minutes and 16 seconds. Some of that, it is an increase over our quarter this time last year by 34 seconds. Some of that could be summer traffic. Volunteers have more responsibilities, things of that nature. Everybody's driven up and down 150, you know, traffic's crazy, so. And just a reminder that the county standard response time is to have something on the road in six minutes. So we are definitely in that mid-range frame still.
So on the nursery report, the volunteer manpower, so 1,187 volunteer hours through that quarter. Nine emergency, which is the training or meetings, 495, two, seven hours. A total of almost 1,700 volunteer hours. And just remind everybody, that's just what our computer system catches when the people use their key file. There is many times, such as the chief's doing things or the president or any member up there doing miscellaneous things, they, we are not keeping a time表 for that. So there is many other hours. So near enough.
A little longer hours.
So the revenue highlights for the, for the first quarter. Of course, we've got our county funds and we got our, half of our county funds. We've got all of our town funds. We appreciate that. The annual donation go out from the Fire Company goes out the first week of July. It is pretty much closed out after the first quarter. Most people have been through their mail. If it's a summer home, they've been home, checked their mail. The only thing we might get is we have a resident who's gone for an extended period of time. So that's pretty well closed out. And that's actually seven thousand dollars less than last year. That's the direct mail with everybody's home. We have an increase in memorial donations, $275. We've had a couple of people in the community of Fire Company numbers that deceased and left their, in their obituaries, had their donations come through the Fire Company. The response invoices, $1,850 less. That's again, we don't go to a collection agency with it and, as the chief reported, a call bank is down slightly. You had on your agenda earlier about the rain down events. So $317 less in event parking. We had, had the events to offer the parking. $935 in conference center. In banquet hall increases, we started to get, again, how we got past COVID and getting things people aren't interested in, especially running the conference center. There's not any places really in town for the small, you know, 50 to 75 people to rent to have a meeting or what happens, so.
Dave, can I interrupt real quick, since we're on this? The banquet hall, what does that entail exactly? Like if, if I were to rent it for a classroom, I think you just had a classroom here. You're about to have a classroom. So what does that mean for, I guess, like, how do you staff? Do you have to staff that or is it just they have the room and they have to clean it up? Like, how does that?
We, we have to have at least one person there because of the lights, the heat and all that. So somebody's got to be there. One of our members has to have the time to be there and supervise that, because there's always going to be a question about the lights or it's too hot or whatever to do. So some, one person has to be there. We have not done anything in the kitchen as far as catering. That is all outside catering. You can come in and we've got a partition that they don't go in our kitchen, but in the corner of the banquet hall, we have a partition where the caterers can sit up in the corner and there and serve the food. So the expense budget highlights, not really any unexpected expenses this quarter so far. We've got all our annual DOT inspections and maintenance apparatuses done. We will have in the next quarter, one of those engines does have some repairs. Needs to go back to the repair facility, so that'll come in next quarters. So all our annual pump testing was not done in this quarter, so that'll be next quarter. But as far as we know, they were done last week. No, no doors inspections coming there. So we do have one engine. All the annual inspections of the small rescue tools, breathing apparatus, that was all completed within the budget guideline. Just a reminder about the capor apparatus. I just left a slide in here from last quarter. We've got the two and a half million dollar loan. Fifteen, sixteen years. We're funding it from out of town runs. Both are on order and the loan's secured. And by the time we pay that loan off, our next engine will be almost 40 years old for replacement time. Just an update on ARPA funds and the FEMA grant. Mayor Council transferred some money out of ARPA funds. We sent the letter and the request to balance to pay on the loan. Our annual capital request, we had a good work session to review that. And then for our air packs, the operational officers are reviewing the different brands, getting prices. And we have sufficient funds in our matching funds to cover some air packs that won't be covered if we grant in our $20,000 max. So we're, we're in good shape there and be able to put in a request for the remaining ARPA funds.
Any questions for fire? If not, I have one. Going back to the slide where you're increased response time by 34 seconds. What time, so at the time of dispatch, how long until after that do you go second to?
It's six minutes.
Six minutes?
Yep.
When do they ask for, like, a response check? Is it six minutes?
It's five minutes.
Five minutes?
Five minutes is the protocol.
Thank you. Have you noticed an increased volume of career staff taking fire calls on first run?
I, I wouldn't say there's an increased volume of that. I mean, it's, that parks, I think more commonly what we're having is an increase of career staff being on an EMS call. So we're getting two on ambulance, they're responding out. And then, you know, we get a fire call, we still have to get the ambulance out. So it's just kind of a, and, I mean, I know, I live outside of town, but getting into town sometimes, especially with our busier days on Sundays and Fridays, it's, it's tough.
Thank you.
Oh, I want to say something. We hadn't mentioned your calendars. Stop.
So the NICA's grant planning for the new year.
I'm being serious about your calendars. I love the idea that you guys did a mockup with the calendar. I truly still believe wholeheartedly that your calendars can sell. I even came up with a thought. If you guys were to, hear me out. If you guys were to partner with the Chamber and find out if a few local businesses or even Ivy could feature them in their locale, that would cut back on you guys having to actually have a volunteer present at, at all times selling them. Because, I mean, if it's in the store, if it's in an establishment on the main strip and they see it, who wouldn't buy that calendar? I would.
The Welcome Center already sells their merchandise.
The Fire Company, oh, say it up. And then you add a calendar. I don't know why you all are laughing. People have messaged me about these calendars because they want to see if they really have. I'm not making this up.
What's the holdup?
So, well, the holdup is money, gambling with the money. So the Fire Company did discuss that. I was getting, preparing a letter to send to update you both on the two fundraisers that we talked about. So we'll update you on the calendar. Was a lengthy discussion. It's again gambling with, with either $1,600 or $4,000. We don't think it's a good gamble. We mentioned that in the email. If you all know a business who wants to sponsor that and will gamble with their money, we're, we're, we're willing to do that then. But we are not going to take $1,600 out of the funds that you provided to us or the donors provided to us, especially with everything going up. And you heard tonight, unexpected repair on a truck, things like that. We just don't want to gamble with that very much. So that's what I was going to say, exactly what you said. If you know a business, and I am on the Chamber, I will ask the Chamber members if they would like to sponsor, have their, have their name at the bottom or a logo. And they, they want to do it, then we will put it.
Not to take away from.
So if you know somebody, shoot us a note.
From the Sheriff's Department, but I mean, you know, just like they do theirs. They have several businesses that are featured on their calendar and they. How many calendars were you going to buy for $4,000?
That, I don't know, because I don't have that here.
That's a lot of calendars.
Well, whatever presented at the work session were the two breakpoints. The 100 or the 500, I think, was the next breakpoint, person. I didn't bring that with me, but it was at the work session, so.
That's a lot of calendars.
Well, that's what we said, how better to sell that than a calendar? That's probably your boy for the 100, if anything.
You don't have any credit connections? You all used to.
Oh, we do.
So, so the EMS court, or EMS cabinet, this is not here. So the same quarter, the town EMS calls, 55% to 285 calls, 232 out of town. That is a decrease of 44 calls from last year. The transports, 211, 74.4% in town, 74 non-transports. It's a decrease of 22 transports from last year. EMS, Sunday is the busiest day followed by Monday. And the busiest times, four to five, followed by two to three, so afternoon hours. Overlapping calls, this is when two, I think, there's a one unit in service and there's another call, so 82 times in that quarter. Both ambulance calls at the same time. Response time, 48 minutes or 48 seconds. This is, does include the third run calls where somebody might respond.
This is, does include the third run calls where somebody might respond from home or at the station and call for the third ambulance to come out. It's increasing simultaneous calls. Not as bad as COVID, but sometimes we do. The ambulances are aged each for title belt and they've got to wait a few minutes. Or if we transport a patient title belt and we go through and they've got to go up to labor and delivery or they've got to go to the cath lab, they're not in and out very quickly. So the decrease from last year were point nine-nine minutes, fifty-nine seconds of a little better response time. So the budget highlights, invoicing were one thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars, eighty-two cents less. That's your lower call volume, less bills go out. County run formula did increase per run in mileage, now operating. About that formula at the work session. And we'll get into that detailed EMS for a more detailed discussion in our next EMS work session. The town provided their funds, we'll increase. Our donations decreased two hundred ten dollars. And these are just our general donations where people just write a check out in the blue this time of year for the EMS. Our annual EMS donation gets mailed out the first Monday in November. So everybody should look for that in the mail. And that's the fifty dollar donation that goes to EMS. And then it's applied to, if you use the service, you then will not get billed for anything that your insurance did not cover. First quarter, no unexpected expenses, but do want to show you what, and these are budgeted, but it is increasing from year to year. So overtime and shift coverage, eleven thousand three hundred ninety-three one dollars more than last year for the quarter. Medical supplies, almost eighteen hundred hours. The vehicle maintenance, apparently it's eleven hundred, below over eleven hundred. So even though it's not changing our operations, the cost is going up. Capital fund summary, we've talked about that. The AMAs is on board for twenty twenty-five delivery, four hundred eleven thousand hours. That will go up. We know that will go up because they cannot provide us the cost of the forward part, the chat, the driving part of the twenty twenty-five chassis until Ford tells them what the price will be. So we know it'll be four eleven plus. We give you the cash flow worksheet. The county is providing seventy-five thousand hours here currently for ambulance replacement. And we made the request fifty-two five hundred for two years and seventy-five thousand on board based on the cash flow worksheet.
And you are familiar that the town put forward forty-five thousand dollars in our local impact grant for ANGO's fund replacement. It's dependent on, like, that money's not there right this moment. But it is the next three fiscal years, we will work to get that money there and available.
So I can provide you with an updated cash flow sheet based on that possibility. So kept on there in contingency fund, we've talked about that. And the reason that's important, we will watch our stats and when we give you the next quarter report. If our runs continue to go down after six months, we will start to have a concerning situation because we, for next fiscal year, that means our county funding will go down. So that's why it's important for us to have a contingency fund for EMS because all that formula is run based. And again, we can get into, that's part of our EMS work session, to talk more about the EMS funding formulas. But that's why that's important to us. We know next year coming, there will probably have to be a pay rate adjustment for our employees. The other companies are in the same boat in our area, increasing. Ocean City with their collective bargaining, if we're going to continue to rent our employees, just like you had to have in your pay study, we will have to stay. So we are pretty sure that is coming for next fiscal year. And we're already looking at that, watching and looking ahead. But every company will do the same thing we do as the budgets come for FY twenty-five. Everybody, we, we all share information. We're very open with all the companies here, even out of county, on what we pay. So we, we know what happens if people do move from company to company. A little more in the south than in the north then. Just from personnel, we're up to sixteen people we know at some point. You know, we are going to have to add an employee supervisor to work to cover that. And if anybody does a good job over sixteen people, it's, it's pretty demanding at times.
Tiring to me.
Yep. Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to hit you next to you. Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you very much for your time, but.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions, just real quick. I wanted to follow up on the, the motion from last meeting. I can't remember the amount. Anyway, it was for the event EMS coverage. And we had received an email just for, from, from, for clarification. It kind of confused me a little bit. So I guess what I'm really asking is, I was envisioning an ambulance unit here.
It is. That's what, that's what we're going to move forward with. And I'm, I took the rest, I explained it, I explained to David that that's a, so you all allocate the funding. We, we have to carry that out. So I think there was an error in like including the group. And we were still working through some of the stuff that was going on. So I explained to David, I took the council off and I said, look, what we, what we need to do is get a fixed location, working with our police department, determine that the ambulance will be on site. There's some logistical stuff about a vehicle, but we're, we're working through that. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah.
But in the future, operational stuff like that.
And the reason I kept it all the council, because of monetary thing, because somebody's got to approve the money. And what the number we gave was the worst case scenario. If the highest paid paramedic was working on overtime and the highest paid EMT.
But they approved up to like nine thousand. So we're, we're good on that front.
As long as you know it's a hundred fifty-five hour, now a worst case scenario, which the mayor replied back. So we've already started scheduling the staff.
Correct. For Ice Ice Berlin.
So we'll have to talk about the operational because the study says, and you don't want to get into that tonight. We talked about that, police chief and EMS captain, ambulance should be at the firehouse.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that.
So we'll talk further about that. But that is, but the money part has been approved and we've already started filling the schedule.
And the, the other thing is, is that it creates an issue where if we all start to reply and stuff over meetings, it just, we don't want all that.
So was it, was Ice Ice Berlin the parade?
We did. Ice Ice Berlin.
So they've already approved it.
Not the parade. Because you all are always.
It was the day after Thanksgiving and New Year's Eve.
Correct. And then we put on the horizon the events through the spring, just as like, hey, give us a number for that if you don't mind. But I think we're going to get through these and we've got some time to.
And I did mention, just so you, so you know, so it's right out here, I did mention Ivy. These rain dates do create a problem because when you've asked somebody to work on Saturday and on Wednesday it rains, I mean, we may not be able to have anybody to work on Sunday. Because we cannot force our people to come in or move us up thirty days in advance for a schedule change. And that is a brow and that's just our.
I'm sure we're going to find like kinks and stuff along the way with the two events.
That was right out here, though.
But I mean, you all operationally, RJ, you all do a phenomenal job too. I mean, like, we've worked through some stuff before, we're good. We'll figure it out.
And I just have your fundraising letter in November that you mentioned.
Well, it's, it's not fundraising.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's annual donation, which goes toward, again, to clarify, is it goes toward if you need the ambulance, you, you're technically, you're buying insurance. That if you need the ambulance, you will not receive a bill for anything that your insurance does not cover. Or if you are an uninsured person, you will not have to pay that bill.
What I was going to suggest, and actually it's more fire, is in that mailing perhaps, or in your, just a suggestion, in your marketing and take it to your leadership, find out how many people would be interested in buying a calendar to see what your base would be.
Pre-order.
Pre-order.
That, so that mailing has already been done.
Well, in the future.
So that would be next July.
Well, we're pretty keen on the calendar, so it might be, it might be easier.
Well, if you're going to do a January calendar, you've got to start looking at it in July.
So get some social media following and stuff. We'll, we'll help promote it too if you want to do a free.
Why you like my calendar, but I'm trying to help you. I mean, you would like calendars.
Calendar needs to know. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, even if they were printing some documents earlier for the mayor's comments during the conference or appearance, I was trying to look for them, so. Thank you. All right, up next, town administrators reporting departmental.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Up next, comments from public. Well, actually, sorry, any questions for the town administrator departmental?
I just have one question, maybe you can answer this, maybe you can. The mayor's report, he said he approved one STR. Do you know what location?
I do not.
We can get that information to you though.
Yeah, I would like to know.
There was an update, a question regarding the STR on Ocean City Boulevard. And the legality of that, there has been a change that conforms to our knowledge with the adopted. Yep, residency requirement with the adopted ordinance. So that is a soon to be, if not already legal, STR, so that's possible now. That's what we were. All right, any other questions for mayor or, oh, we'll confirm. Thank you. All right, up next, comments from the public, please. Anyone wishing to dress it up, just come forward if you don't mind, name, street name. Thank you. Thank you, just name or street name or entity that you're.
Gabriel and Diana Purnell with the nine six oh nine heavy road, Berlin. Normally don't stay for these long meetings, so you know it must be something serious. On Seahawk Road, you know, we run that road every day. I was going by Stevie Cater Schools. It's very, very dangerous. And in fact, the markings are just about gone. And if it's a rainy night and my wife and I'm driving, she scares the hell out of me sometimes. I'm serious. Because she can't see which lines. So it needs to be on a, I feel, it needs to be, the markings need to be, be done on a periodic basis, probably, I don't know, on a yearly, six months. Because people from out of town, when those folks going into East Ocean East, they have no clue on where that turn is. It's so narrow.
We've actually entered into an agreement with S H A.
We can't. However, S H A owns two striping trucks, apparently.
We're trying to get their striping truck here to make those lines reflective.
But they had indicated that they have no idea when that will happen.
I just asked Jimmy Charles about that back before the meeting started. And apparently it seems like the truck.
Sarah, make a note, we'll talk to the secretary.
Well, the truck is not, the truck that's designated to the eastern shore is broken and won't, and won't be, and they're not anticipating repair. I was just asking about the update for that same line you're talking about. They're talking about, they're looking at next year, like twenty twenty-four.
I believe, however, that Jimmy has spoken to a private contractor.
That's what I'm saying, it should be a private.
We'll also reach out. I mean.
It's got to be a law state with twenty-two.
Who's responsible? Is it the developer or is it the town now?
Seahawk Road is a town.
Yeah, it's a town.
It is a town.
So it's a town.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to make that change.
Yeah, it is something that has been actively worked on, but the state's truck breaking now. I'm thrilled monkey wrench.
And we've talked to, they're not town electric poles either because we've wanted to improve the lighting. So that further complicates the issue. But we'll.
I'd like to, you know, probably keep us up on it because it's very.
Diane, I'm sure your driving is impeccable.
You alone, eyes can lose dim. But other than the striping, I've seen many times I'd be headed out, cater, that school. And I've seen cars come out of Ocean East and flip right around and hit that sound. And I've seen some near, you know, close, very close accidents and, and the buses and everything. I don't know what you can do about that little piece of cement right out there in the middle of the road and. But that's, that's very dangerous. Eventually we're going to have, I don't know, the, the, did the state highway have to develop the, the medium out there in the road?
That medium went through several changes.
That's, that's a dangerous situation.
I've seen several accidents on the medium, people run right up on the medium. And then, I don't know what to mean, it wasn't paying attention, but I've seen it.
My recollection is that was put in place to try to prevent exactly what you're talking about with operations. Doing that.
Yeah, but it's, it's.
Well, you got to have it, it can get the stripes so we can see.
Yeah, yeah.
Why, I have to hear, I actually have a question for you. So I'm at Stevie Cater Middle School twice a day, every day. With change of, sometimes the sheriff is out there, sometimes they're not, saying that you can't turn, you come out of middle school and you can't turn left. They were having to be there today, but oftentimes they're not. Have you, on Flower Street, have you all seen an increase in volume of traffic, say, this year compared to the previous years? Because of that change the sheriffs made?
Now, the sheriffs will be out there, but unfortunately, I don't see them out of their car that much. But you see the, the employees that we employ to be out there directing traffic, that, you know, those guys.
Coffee partners.
And I really, really worry about them because they be out there directing traffic and you get somebody breeze right by them. And you know, and so at the middle school, the problem is, if you got traffic coming out of the middle school, they will send them either way. They will send them out to Route Fifty or they'll send them back down Seahawk South. And I'm just afraid of those guys because they blow their whistles and they wave and stuff. But people just will bomb when they feel like it. So that's, that's, that's dangerous. You know, they're older guys and they're trying to do their best. So when you get, it's awful in the morning and it's just as bad and.
Yeah, so this year, they, they started, I don't want to take the time, but just so I can complete the point. If you leave Stevie Cater Middle School, you have to go right on Cater, not on Seahawk Road.
On Seahawk.
Yeah, you can't turn left.
Right.
Way to share.
Right.
So that's why I was curious if you all, because the town was, I asked the chief back then, the town was not consulted on that, which I thought was a little bit inappropriate.
I have seen them go, I've seen them, they just run, but the little man standing out there trying to.
Yeah, they go to Crystal Landing Center and turn around.
But we know it's dangerous and we can't do anything about it except do the.
Striking off.
Striking. You know, it's something you got to live with, you know, but the bottom line is I think we could do a better job and get it, keep it a striping, even if we got a hard, because lines, I mean, we don't want to wait for somebody in the, dying.
We'll, we'll put the call in.
All right.
So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we'll try our best.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the mayor and council? I think we had hands on all five, so you all, go ahead. Name and street name if you don't mind.
Good evening, mayor and council, it's Tom Simon, Eighth Baker Street. Nice to see you all this evening. Thank you all for all the hard work you guys are always doing. I'm here to implore y'all to support the Build Buckingham movement. I know that you guys don't have a dog in the fight. The funding doesn't come from you guys. I know it comes from the state and the county. However, Buckingham is integral to our community. There are many citizens of the town of Berlin that work there. There are many citizens of the town of Berlin that, that are parents at the school. And there are many citizens of the town of Berlin that go to school there. So I would, I would like to ask all of you to, to join, join our voices and support a new Buckingham Elementary, the school that our parents, teachers, staff and community deserves. I know that the commissioners, Diana Purnell, she already left, but I appreciate their support on this issue. And delegates Otto and Hartman and Senator Mary Beth Carosa have all pledged support to this. And I would just like to see the mayor and council do the same.
Well.
I was wondering, I actually had that in my comments. I was wondering if we could write a letter.
Well, I've, I've taken, I've already spoken to the superintendent, I spoke to the board of it. I have a meeting in with the IAC who makes the decision. You have a meeting with them? The executive director and the chair. And we'll work that right through to the senate, we'll work the house, we'll work the governor's office. We'll do everything we can. So when the time's needed for a letter, we'll let everybody know.
Okay.
I want to know exactly from the IAC why Buckingham's not being built.
Yeah, considering that all of these schools were not considered adjacent schools, the last go around. When Shawell got their school, where eighteen percent of the students at Shawell come from economically distressed homes. Or at Buckingham, at our school, fifty-eight percent of the students come from economically distressed homes. And now, for some reason, the criteria has changed. What's that?
I said, I'm a former Bucky the Bears.
We know the song, we know the song.
I've only been a parent there for, you know, about a month, but I love the school, I love our teachers.
My principal.
Really?
Yeah, good, better, best.
I was hoping for a letter, what else would you like to see?
Yeah, that's, I did, you know...
Write bold 33.
I know this is a contentious issue, but I'm sure many of you have seen that I have made flags, and some of my friends have helped me make flags that are around the town. I was told anonymously by a council member that they were afraid to fly the flag.
You dropped one off at Buckingham.
I know, I have two. We just built a front porch, and the only reason why we haven't hung it is because we were waiting for approval for our front porch to be signed off on as being legit. So might have to put the flag.
I just want to explain the reasoning that...
Put one on the front porch, I'll have it tomorrow.
Okay, I just want to explain the reasoning that was they were afraid of the commissioners cutting off money and being upset with the town of Berlin. So I just want, I just wanted to show, I just, there's been all these statements out there from all these people, and I just think that it's our community and it's most important coming from us. So I would just like to see some support for that.
The other important thing to note is the funding that we get from the commissioners, right? They reduce the, the additional add-ons, but the funding we really get from the commissioners is designed to help offset the taxes that our residents pay. It's in the form of a grant. It's not a defined prescription as to how much they have to provide. They can provide zero, but historically, that's really what the grant is. And that's why it's equal across municipalities.
Okay.
So Tom, are you asking for the, the flags to be flown on Town Hall?
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
No, I'm, I'm just asking for broad support wherever we can get it.
We can't do Town Hall.
Yeah.
But we, we can, if you ask each one of us individually, I'll pop out if I want one in my home.
Okay.
So Mayor, I understand you have this meeting, I think, can we, this is my comment. I understand you have this meeting, which is great, but can we still draft, I think it's still a letter just showing our, as the Berlin community, showing our support in the appeal process and creating or...
Right now, we don't, well, right now, we don't really, we've heard thirdhand, maybe fourthhand, the reason Buckingham might not be built, right? You served on the conceptual plan, I served on it, Councilmember Nurt served on it. We, I, I think, speaking for the body, we all want Buckingham, right? Well, that's what I want to know. And that's, the IAC is the group that makes the decision on school construction.
When is that, when is that meeting, your IAC?
My executive director said that the chair was out and him, he was supposed to send something over today. So I don't have the exact meeting date, but we do have that working. And after that, I think we'll clear, more clearly understand the pathway for advocacy. But I've expressed to the superintendent, the Board of Ed, and the county commissioners know where we stand on this as well. We, as a town and as the mayor, I want to see Buckingham built. I think we all see that, but we need to best...
As a parent, as a brand, there goes...
We need to best understand where we can advocate and make meaningful progress. So if we're sending our letter, we, we want to know where that's going first.
I agree. There was letters sent to Governor Westmore, which I think could be helpful.
Yes, but the, I think it's important to note that the governor, as well as the Senate President and the Speaker of the House, all nominate members to the IAC. The IAC is the board that determines school construction. So meeting with the chair and the executive director will give us a better sense of the reasons that they believe Buckingham's not a fit for construction. So from there, we can better understand how to advocate. But we are doing something, so.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
What that comment you just made, I don't want to take it too far. What the comment you just made on the governor making the appointments, being that our governor currently is freshman, are any of the appointments on this committee ones that he has made himself or are these people who have been sitting there before he became governor?
They, they are, the board is made up of not just the governor's appointments, but the governor gets a certain number, the Senate President gets a certain number, and the Speaker of the House gets a certain number.
Right, but are any of these guys freshmen?
I think so, that's the...
That's what I was wondering.
There has been a change from the time that Shawell's built versus now, so.
But that's been...
I can't speak to who nominated who and when, but...
Right.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Name and street name, please.
Hi, good evening. Mary, Governor Westminster, God, and a couple things. What Tom just said, I spoke in front of the Board of Ed last week, please, any support for Buckingham would be greatly appreciated. The other thing on the stormwater issue, listening to what DBF was saying and talking about Abbey and Westminster and the other areas that feed into it, there's one thing, there's one place that keeps getting ignored. And I don't think I explained it clearly, so I've actually got pictures that might help. There is a ditch behind the houses 1 through 8, and this is on one side of Westminster. The ditch on the other side of Westminster is a whole nother set of issues. But this ditch in particular, behind 1 through 8, the water doesn't flow. It, it ponds, it doesn't make it to the drainage ditch on Abbey. So y'all are talking about spending a lot of money replacing west, replacing this ditch, working on the pond. But honestly, and I can show you, there's about, there's hundreds of thousands of gallons of water that just sit there that's not even making it to the drainage ditch or making it to the pond. So that when this, when this issue gets addressed and this water starts flowing, a lot of what you're already talking about doing is going to be, will, and happen to be redone. And maybe, maybe, I mean, I've sent pictures in the past, like years ago, I, poor Zach and Dean, I used to blow up everybody's email. But maybe if you all could take a look at these, it would make it clearer as to what I'm saying. And nobody, like, this water's not even being included in what the water and everything that they're looking at doing. So if I, can I get this to Mayor?
Absolutely. And just know that we're also, this is a separate project from the stormwater work that's going to be happening right in your neighborhood. You know that, right?
It's, it's separate, but it's all connected.
Right, but they work together, EA and DBF, they're, through this project, they're not going to tackle it independently.
Yeah, well, as I said, nobody's mentioned this ditch. And the problem is, is that they're talking about replacing that, that drainage there on Abbey and then do something with the pond. And this water's not even making, it's not even making it to where they're talking about fixing what they think they know. And when we had the meeting in the spring, this came up, where, you know, Darrell said, yes, we need to work this all together. This first picture is at 1 Westminster. This is where the water's supposed to drain from 8 to 1, to go, and you can see the top of the ditch there. The second picture is my backyard, and this was all taken within just a few minutes of each other. And then the third picture is my neighbor's house to the left of me, which would be 4 Westminster. And you can see there's numerous sheds that sit on these ditches, and the water's not flowing, and this is not a very clear picture, but it's ponding. So there's absolute, there's no flow going through here, and this water sits like in our yards, it goes into west, it goes onto West Street. And then, as I said, you've got the ditch on the other side, which, that ditch, which is deeper, actually fills and goes into those people's backyards, and that water doesn't make it to the pond on, you know, where on Westminster and Abbey. But if you, I've got chicken scratch on me, so I'll apologize, but...
Do you want to give it to Sarah? And she can always stand.
Not to, not to get us going on this, because this is a deep slippery slope. But the question that's, that's flashing right behind you that I see all night and I'm hearing is, who did this ditch belong to? I know we've talked about this before.
Okay, this, this, that's a really good question. Okay, this is quoted quite a ditch. When this was originally, when this development was originally put in in 1992, 93, there, there was no ownership taken on this ditch. There was supposed to be a homeowners association, which was never formed. So when I got involved in this in December of 2017, I was told by the town numerous times that this was a Worcester County problem, not a town of Berlin problem. So going to Worcester County and Maryland Department of the Environment, and after dealing with the town for many years, Jeff Fleetwood, formerly one, who I think was Mr. Gaskell, to find out who actually was responsible for this ditch. And this was in 20...
And the finding is?
This was in 2020.
Right.
And so what happened was that it came back and Jeff told me that it was half the owner and half the town. But the problem is, is that this, this ditch, according to the stormwater codes, and I've got everything highlighted, and I've got that with me, I'd be more than happy to share that, there are numerous violations where this ditch has never been cleaned, it's never been lucked, there's been no work, no work done, but there's been no ownership of it.
So that's going to be, and I'm not going down that road tonight, and I'm not saying it to be rude, but that right there is a huge issue. Because if we, if Mr., if I gave Mr. Morell 30 seconds, he would bring up, say it.
Mr. Wallace.
Bam, here you go. So...
But the difference between this and what Mr. Wallace's property is, is that the town, okay, the town has given permits to be placed on this drainage swale. And according to Maryland Department of the Environment and Worcester County Stormwater, that is a clear violation of any state and county codes. And the town has even recently, as 2021, issued another permit for a larger shed to go on this swale. The town has blocked the flow of this water in this swale. And this is, and I can, it's documented.
So, so, so the, so the sheds are in the ditch?
Yes, I'm not going to show you that.
These people are willingly building sheds in a ditch that floods, and their, and their sheds are flooding?
With permits from the town of Berlin.
No, I hear you, I hear you on the permits, but you're applying for these permits and you know that these, the sheds are in the water hole and they're going to flood as well?
Their sheds are raised, but the water... Somebody filled yours.
No, the sheds are not raised.
I mean, that, the whole, that whole concept is...
Sorry, no, the, the, not, not raised. They are placed on the ground.
What sense does that make?
There is no raising of the shed.
So water goes into the...
So the water goes into the sheds.
But by raise, you mean the grade of the ditch has been filled? So the shed is on the ground? And that's, that's true, at least the last time we walked.
Yeah.
So...
That's true.
And, and, and to be fair, to be fair, going back, there, there were things that had never happened, like when I purchased my house, clear in the, in the codes, it states that I was supposed to sign an agreement with the town of Berlin that I would maintain this, this swale drainage in my backyard. There, there was no agreement. And I went to every single neighbor on my block and nobody had ever gotten an agreement to sign. There are some people that are still there that are original owners back from when it was first built.
And there's been a maintenance in their portion either?
I'm sorry?
No, and you're saying, are those folks saying they didn't maintain theirs either? Their portion of it?
Yeah, nobody's maintained anything. And when, there are people that are there that originally purchased back there in 1992, 93, and they've never, they've, it was never even mentioned to them that there was a swale or anything being put back there. And that ditch was put in, I believe the gentleman's name, Zach, Mayor Kevin Graham, Mr. Wright, Charles Wright, lived on the corner of Abbey and West Street, and he had a farm or something back there that was flooding. So when the town was going to, like, annex its property and do all this development back there, the town agreed with him to put this ditch in. And that's all back in the early 1990s.
So Mary, I know the water ponds on your property, the house that's directly behind you that faces West Street and that whole little home, does it also pond up on their property?
It, it ponds on their property. The guy who sits on the other side of him, I believe it's 401 West Street, the town permitted him to go in with no permits to bring in four dump trucks full of dirt, pack down to build a big yard because it flooded so bad. Guess where that water was? You know? And his yard still floods, but not as bad. The people to the right of me, which would be two, they flooded really bad. Their, their backyard probably gets it worse than mine does. But as you go down from my house down, where people have put their fences and I can't really see, but Jamie and Alden have been back them, some of them do flood and some of them don't because they build up, they build them up. And there's no swale there.
And the challenge we run into each time we look at it is that it, it really does hit that point of private property that makes it difficult. We can't find a clear pathway showing that the town has obligations for it, which means it's a slippery slope, like with Mr. Wallace's stuff, like, we can't really...
It's a catch 22.
It's a hard thing, but I mean, if we can, in, the, the bottom line is that if we're going to be doing the work on Abbey Lane and Westminster and that pond, let's see what we can do to help alleviate as much as we can.
Absolutely.
While we're working on that project, let's take that first. And if there's something we can address along the way, I'm sure Darrell and them will try their best.
Well, as I said, maybe, maybe this will explain it better than I'm not coming...
I have seen the pond behind the house. After one of the most recent rains we had, I drove there and...
I do that too. Everybody drove down, I saw everyone.
Well, thank you, if you don't mind, if you have extra copies, you're welcome to pass that along to Sarah and we'll, we'll scan it and make sure. Thank you. All right, up next are comments from the council. Vice President Burrell?
I have two things.
Go ahead.
I'm going to suggest to the town that we be very careful as it relates to advertising events downtown. My reference is to sip and shop as it appears on our website. After reading that, that, that release, I felt about the town of Berlin and, and Town Hall, that we are, we are supporting, now this is bottom line, and being real candid, we are supporting people coming to, to the town of Berlin, shopping, and drinking liquor in the streets. Because it, it says that, that, that you come to Berlin to shop and the hours are going to be extended. And we're gonna, we've made a deal with the local breweries to provide free wine and beer. And I don't want the town of Berlin to be, or a part of any lawsuit if somebody overdrips and gets hurt. You know folk can sue you for anything these days. And I could make an argument as it relates to the responsibility of the town of Berlin for those mishaps with this type advertisement. So, so I'm just suggesting that, that, that we be more careful as we support these events expressly those that provide for alcohol.
I saw those, did it come, I was distracted, because we have, I get Economic Development one, I get the Chamber one.
I totally thought it was the Chamber.
Was it the Chamber?
That's what I thought, I don't know.
No, this was, this was...
Was this to replace our stroll? I, yeah, I know, but I didn't know who did the posting.
Okay, so this was feedback requested from the merchant meeting, which we did as a result of the, we did our small business roundtable, the business owners requested a monthly merchant meeting, which is led by Ivy Wells and Allison Early, actually, from Community and Economic Development. The merchants asked if they would, could agree among themselves to stay open late every Friday night in November and December for the holiday season, on Friday. And then they really missed the art stroll, the sip and stroll, but we, there's no permit allowed for that, to be able to walk and drink at the same time. So what, what they are allowed to do, and happens in storefronts, you know, at their own discretion, is to not sell, but give samples of beer or wine in the stores, but no one is allowed to stroll. They have to stay in the store, you can't leave the store with the drink.
And I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, hold on, can I take a second? I think Vice President Burrell is not upset about any of that. He's upset about the way that it's portrayed, is that correct? And where it maybe came from. So we'll double check that. We'll take a look and see if that came from...
It really does. And my second thing, I would like to move that after this session, that the council moves to an executive session for, to the... for, to discuss personnel issue related to one individual.
Okay, and that would fall within the allotment?
I, I believe it would, because we got in trouble when we did the whole pay study. It included everybody. And those decisions indicated that if it be one specific individual, it should be okay.
Okay. So then, with that being said, would.
Can I just ask a quick question? Is this a personnel matter, or is it a matter not related to public business regarding an individual?
No, I, I think this can be, this is a personnel matter.
Okay. And with that being said, we would like to do that after this.
Yes.
So, any trouble with advertising, or can it just be, and we'll report out?
We'll have to report it out, obviously, we can.
I mean, is that okay? Is that under the law? Or are we gonna be jammed up?
Technically, no, you are, you are supposed to give advance notice.
No, we are supposed to ask the, the public if there's any objection to us moving into executive session. Is there any objection?
Well, no, no, we do that, we do that in the, in the statement of closure. So, but if the group.
We, we can do, if it's, if it's, if it's an emergency, we can report after.
And.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that it's gonna be problematic. I just wanted to clarify that.
Can you, in the interim, can you pull up one of the statements of closure so I can read it? I think I can probably summarize the closure point, I just want the topic, the flow, if you don't mind. And then we'll see if there's an objection of the group at that time. All right. Anything else, Vice President Morell?
There is all on there.
Okay. Councilmember Nair?
No, not really.
Okay, Councilmember Nichols?
Nothing.
Okay, Councilmember Wors?
I don't have anything today.
Councilmember Green?
I'm too curious to ask anything else.
Right.
Okay. Up next are comments from the mayor, and are you able to put the closure up here? I can just read it from there if you want. However you want to do it, or print one. You know what I'm after yesterday?
Yes, but.
My little cheat sheet that Mary normally gives me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you should be able to.
Yeah, just go ahead and.
You may have to pull one from an old meeting.
Yeah, but she's asking it, you can turn that off. You can turn that off, that's fine. Yep, thank you. And then, comments, dang man, comments from the mayor. So I have two things. One, I want to say Jamie's not here, but I do want to say thank you to Sarah, thank you to Mary, thank you to Jamie and all the staff, and our engineers, and for, to the council for appropriating the funds for the water well number three. It's a huge investment for Berlin. I can't tell you how many times we sweat over whether we were gonna have to ration water or not. It's a huge obstacle, and we even expressed that to M.D. this evening. They were on site with the need for a fourth well. But the town of Berlin is in a much better position for the work that all of you did and all of our staff, as well as the funding appropriated by the federal government directly to municipalities through ARPA. The town of Berlin utilized that funding to re-drill a new water well number three. And we unveiled that this evening. It's operational, but takes a little bit of time to drill and then get through the permitting process. So I wanted to say thank you to all of you, and thank you to Sarah for coordinating that. The other item I'd like to bring up is that, I brought this to everybody's attention, regarding a request that we received from a developer that's interested in parcel 57, well, actually, Harren Park. And had approached me asking if they could be placed on the agenda to present a contract to the mayor and council for the acquisition of Harren Park. I said to the individual that I would, I'm not putting them on the agenda, that they're welcome to come up before public comment, and that I was going to take it to the group in the mayor's comments to let them know that I had been approached. It's not within the authority of the mayor to say no. So I wanted to bring it to all of you. That's something that somebody had asked. They'd requested a 15-minute presentation at a subsequent meeting. And I said to that individual that my recommendation, I would bring that to the body, but my recommendation to the body would be that before you entertain any offers to sell all or a portion of Harren Park, that we clearly articulate, if that's the path you want to go down, clearly articulate an RFP with the parcels you would like to see included and the uses. And that was my message to the group, so that if somebody wanted to bid on Harren Park, it was an open bid. So that's where it stands. I'll, I'll entertain any, I'd like a direction from the body. Do you want to see them come up? Do you want to say thank you, but no thank?
Did they explain what they were proposing?
No, they said, I'll send you a copy of the contract, I said, no, thank you. So, if, that's, that's what I.
Well, my opinion, to be fair to everyone involved, is I think we should decide what we want to do with it, the property, before we entertain selling anything of it. I think that, I'm not, not knowing all the details, I think that entertaining a contract without even going through the RFP process would be considered ill-advised from a businessperson's standpoint, because that may, what I believe someone alluded to, may give the appearance of an unfair advantage in the future if we go that route. But I think it'd be easier just to decide what we want to do before we entertain contracts.
So you're right now?
Oh, shit, yeah.
I'm gonna know. Thank you. We'll work it down the line. Whoever wants to go next, I want to hear from all of you, if you don't mind.
Oh, I'm gonna know. I think that the way you handled it was correct. I think, I'm not interested in entertaining any other thoughts or plans for the grand scape of Chicken Plant property or the slash Harren Park. Until we know that the council majority that turned down the most recent proposal, what they want to do.
Thank you. Others? Vice President Morell?
I didn't understand what Steve said.
So, the focus, we determined to turn down another developer for the property sale of parcel 57. Prior to that, there was the will of the council not to sell the entire park to a developer who went through the RFP process and went through a extended negotiation period with the town. We had a number of meetings, and he was turned away. So I don't think it's fair to have another bidder come forward after hearing all of our conversations and after being very aware of the pricing and the positions taken by each of us as far as why we were in favor or why we were opposed, to allow him to come in now with a proposal. I don't think it's fair, because I think we all acknowledge that we don't know what we want to do with this property. So I want to really, I'm gonna look forward to hearing what the three people that were the no votes for the previous bidder, what they want to do with the property.
Well, I was one of those no votes. And what I want to do with the property is really not important. I was opposed to that proposal because I felt it was bad for the town of Berlin. I felt that that proposal would actually hurt what goes on downtown now. That was my reason. But, but what I want is not important. It is, it is important that we, we, we search out the opinions and recommendations of folks that live in the town of Berlin to ascertain what they would like to see out.
You got what I got.
On Harren Park. And I believe that, that if someone has, has an idea of what, I'm not saying enter into a contract, if someone has an idea of what Harren Park could be, I think it is worth the citizens of the town of Berlin having an opportunity to hear that idea.
So my question to the group, and to you, Vice President Morell, Councilmember Nichols, and Councilmember Nair, just because I haven't heard from you, is the person approached me, or do you want them on the agenda, yes or no?
Just, I just have one more thing. And Steve, I tried to answer your question as gentle as I could, but, but we have had a vote on, on the outcome of the proposal that was submitted. And I would like for us, as a council, to move on.
But to that.
I moved on, I'm telling you the tour.
Hold on, to, to that point, that's why I'm asking each one of you about whether this is coming back on the agenda. I've, I've been very clear with the person that approached me to say, it's been no twice by majority. I'm not putting it on the agenda again unless the majority of the council wants it on the agenda, out of respect for the majority's decision. So now I'm asking you and each of the others, do you want this or not?
Well, well, I said yes.
You would like a presentation? Councilmember Nair?
So we reaffirm the fact that we're no longer interested in selling 410. That's the location of the skate park, you know? So the town's gonna keep that parcel along with 191. So those options are out of play. I don't know if this developer wants everything or not, but the only parcel that's available is 57.
Yes or no?
If we decide to sell it. We're all charged with trying to make a decision of what we want to see there. I think it's in our best interest to listen to anybody with an idea. We don't have to accept it, we don't have to act on it. We can just listen to what he has to say, so I think that's in our best interest, because it might help us formulate what we want there down the road. I think it's worth our time.
So yes, yes.
I'm not saying that I want to go down a 10-month process again, but what I'm thinking, if anybody that wants that, that comes up to this again, that they need to go through the same process as our prior, to go through the RFP process the same way that we required the previous individuals. So, and believe me, when I said my no was a no, not that I, it was never that I didn't want to sell the pro, the property. It was never that, that wasn't what it was. My no was a no because I didn't want, where we, where we were in this process, I didn't, I didn't think that the proposed project was the project for that site, for the location. I'm not saying that whatever someone else brings, and I'm not saying this particular developer, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying, what someone else may bring to the table, maybe that's it. That, because I mean, as it's, as everyone stated, it was set here, it was set there. We don't know what we want, we need to figure that out. At the same time, whomever, whomever comes forth needs to be treated the same way that the other individuals were treated as far as going through the same process that they all went through.
But that process is no longer available?
I'm not saying, if we're gonna, if we're, if we're entertaining the idea of selling this pro, this, this plot again, then something needs to, we need to go through the, a process.
But I think what I'm hearing from you is that they should follow the same process that Nutelli followed, and the same process that.
It doesn't have to be, I mean, I'm not saying the exact same, because the, like you said.
Coastal veterans property.
As you said, that, that RFP is over. But if we're talking about selling it, then an RFP, the same way we, we, we had done with anybody else who was interested, needs to be done. It can't just be come in and sit here and, hey, guess what? This is what I think we should do.
So are you a no then?
I'm not saying I'm, I want to see the process, I want to see a process followed. I don't, I don't think it would be fair, I don't think.
And you still have to follow the process.
I don't think it would be fair to the priors if we didn't make an individual go through the process. You see what I'm saying?
Oh, I agree, that was my recommendation. So are you a no?
Am I a no to hearing?
To putting it on the agenda.
To putting it on the agenda.
I am a no with just making it, making it an agenda item.
So no to the making it an agenda item?
I think there needs to be the process followed, yes.
I agree. So majority in favor of not putting it on the agenda. So, thank you all.
I mean, I don't care what anybody has to say, but I think you need to follow the process.
I agree. All right, so up next is comments from the press. Okay, and then. I'm, I have to. No, no, stop. I need the statement of closure.
She's working on it. I'm gonna see if I can't pull up.
I think I remember the flow.
But don't worry, it's best first before we.
I'm gonna try it off the cuff. See if we missed something, Mary, you let me know. All right, so the place is Town Hall. The vote to close will take place in the council chambers. The discussion will move to the conference room. The date that we'll return to a next public meeting is November 13th, 2023, at 7:00 P.M. here in this room. It's the place. The next is any objection from the public to move into closed session. Actually, a statement of closure first. General provisions article 3 dash, 305 B7, right?
B1.
B1, that's personnel. And. And then any objection under the general provisions article by the public. Seeing none, we'll take a vote by the council.
Do you turn the live feed?
He needs to make a motion, he needs to make that motion.
Move to, I, I.
Do I need to clarify the personnel?
I think that we need to.
You need to close that?
No.
No.
Don't do that.
You're, you're fine, yes.
Okay, and then.
Move to, move into executive session.
A motion to go into executive session.
I would like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you, I have a motion by Vice President Morell.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Nair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the vote is unanimous to go into closed session, and we will return to public session. We should return back to adjournment, shouldn't we? Because we have adjourned.
We can adjourn this meeting and then go into closed session.
You can have a regular session, meeting session.
Okay, so the report out will happen on November 13th, as we said?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
The open session.
The open session.
By Vice President Morell, second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Sorry.